And it's also recorded on YouTube. All the information that we do. For people that couldn't understand. So it's six o'clock and I start the public hearing. This is an informational public hearing where we are going to share with you two ordinances that we are proposing and also our town government budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So we'll start with. We have a little PowerPoint. It's behind you, but.
Thirty second.
So the next slide, we're starting with the blight ordinance. So. So. Places of the blight ordinance are up there if you didn't get any. They're also been published on the website. So this ordinance. Is it recording or not?
No, it is recording. It's just making sure we're showing.
So the blight ordinance, the blight regulation. So we already have. State statutes and building codes that are in place for us to enforce. Most of the blight and pretty much the same blight that's in the ordinance, but we don't have anything. In order to fully enforce those, we need like a procedure and a way of buying, which is defined in this ordinance. And the ordinance also creates paid positions that would more than likely have to be paid being the blight enforcement officer and the other position is being. After the end, they're the ones that are like the judge.
And of course, there'll also be legal.
But you guys want to talk about.
Did I ask you a question before you start? You grew up in this town?
Since nineteen sixty seven.
Yeah. You too?
I've been here since two thousand five.
So. They'll explain the ordinance. I am with the idea of the ordinance, but I'm not with the costs associated with it because we got to hire those two people. We also could anticipate legal fees and we would all the town would also be responsible. If a state, a home is cited for blight and they're, they're going through the procedures, they're being fined. They're not doing anything because the town has determined that that property is a, is a safety hazard or a blight as defined in the statute. The town's then responsible if the property owner does not, is they're responsible for tearing down the property. So that could be a huge cost to the taxpayers. And it could be an unexpected cost depending on the stage of the building because a lot of these older buildings have wet, infected. And would need to be remediated also with adds to the cost. We because it's something that we can't predict the cost or how many homes would be affected by the blight officer in a certain year. We're anticipating for, to go with our first year with the ordinance. We're adding three hundred thousand dollars to the budget coming from the taxpayers to cover any potential cost so that we don't have to pull it from the grand list. Which cost of the blight ordinance, which would be the, the cost would be the, how many hours are for how the the officer pays on the the, what do you call this, a patient review or whatever?
Yes.
And also to take to tear the house down. Which we could put as a lien on the property for the property owner. But the property owner, the town wouldn't see that money until the property owner sells their property, which could be.
Twenty years from now.
Who knows?
And on the tear down, if there's, as Tracy said, if there's ladder asbestos, then you know, the cost skyrockets for tearing that property down.
Why is the town need to pull any of its property down that they contacted? Or is this become a problem or? In particular, has anybody been sent a letter called?
Well, we haven't had that for a recent place yet, so.
Is there an issue then?
There are issues with a lot of houses in town that are not lived in that are safety hazards, health hazards.
There's also, correct me if I'm wrong on this Tracy, but there's also a liability concern if the town does nothing. So the house.
No, I don't know about it. The house is not.
If we do nothing about it.
The liability on the town should be on the.
Right. It's not, it's not for that. It's only liability for the town. If the town has started a procedure or does the blight ordinance, and they're in the name.
This town operates on the international building code, correct? You have a building official, correct?
Yeah.
You know, the building code, connection in there for the building official who has a right to condemn the house if it's unsafe and you get the health department involved. Not so much the fire marshal, the single family dwelling, because that's a castle. And you get an engineer, the town can get an engineer to look at the structure and make sure it's not fit to stay. And then the building official can order it down. So we don't need this blight program. I'm against this blight program.
I'm just going to, and that's why we're not.
Yeah, but you got, you don't even know the cost that's going to exceed to this town. The tax has been risen in this town two or three times already since I've been here. And I'm done with the taxes going up for what? And I know the majority of it is the school and I'm not against the school. We gotta teach our kids. But this blight program was designed for a city, not a town. Most towns don't have a small rural town. There's only twenty-two hundred people in this town. First of all, it should have went to a referendum. You still don't have the right just to shove it down our throat.
Oh, we haven't, we haven't.
Because no ordinance has been passed.
I know that, but you guys are going to, you will get a vote on it, right?
No, we, we.
You gonna turn out the referendum?
Yes.
Why don't you tell me that?
Well, we eventually got there, right?
If you think you brought it up.
There's a lot of people against it. I could tell you already now. We don't want it.
Anybody who's registered should not just take personal property. This also includes junk cars. And it's usually the blight issue in towns purely, it's not the condemnation of buildings. But for the poor soul, the enforcer, we asked to go around and operate under triage. Right? Which one, which should he pick, he or she pick first? To present to the town, but this person needs to cease and desist of devaluating that person's property of their neighbors. I've already gone through this, so I know how this works. Right? That's a self-guided thing. That's where I, as an individual, bring my concern to the town. And they send out the zoning officer, they take pictures, this is all historical by the way. And that person gets a cease and desist. And then they become my enemy. So that, that, that to me is like the number one issue is not the actual buildings. There's not that many buildings. The number of people who have, by definition of these rules, junk in their yards. Would you agree or disagree with that?
My, my issue would be that in order to pay for the real problems, you know, the houses and dwellings that are a real problem. That in order to, to pay for that, every, you know, every, you know, buddy's getting fined for something in order to pay for this blight, you know, the, the job that's going to be created to deal with the real problems, it's going to get paid for by making a lot of problems that aren't really problems. That that's what we're concerned.
So let, let me also add to you on the car, the junk car thing. The zoning officer has a right to enforce that.
I know. So that's my question.
I don't need.
How do you guys envision imposing this poor person going out there picking someone's neighbor and saying, okay, this person is going to be subjected to these rules? How, how do you go about the triage, if you will, doing?
I'm going to step up and say I was the one that has been the responsible proponent on the board to put a blight ordinance in. And just to quickly explain the reason why I think it's important. There, we have had a situation where we've had a building in debt. We have bond reported building up. We have sent letters to the property owner. They came down here several times. And then nothing happened. This is what, over the course of eighteen months. We need to have a lever. We don't want to take people's property away from them. We don't want to tell you how high your grass is supposed to be. But what we need is a lever to encourage people to either remediate the problem or to sell the property to somebody else who will remediate the problem. Or find them so that they'll understand, gee, this is going to cost me money to decide that you can't make me do what I should do.
Well, again, you're dealing with problems, but my question revolves around someone takes this list.
Who do we pick?
And, and, and yeah.
We're not picking anybody. Somebody would have to come in and basically file a complaint.
There's no need for this new program if that's what we're going to do about those items. This program is designed in your minds, it sounds like, built.
Largely, that's what I'm thinking. But to your point, to your point, there are people who collect tractor trailers and leave them parked and they haven't moved in thirty or forty years.
That's a zoning issue.
That might be the issue.
That's a zoning issue, not blight.
No, and I said.
That's zoning, not blight, sorry. Under the zoning regs, you could stop that simply.
That's true.
So you don't need blight. Listen, I did this for twenty-two years. I worked in big cities and everything. I know what happens. And I don't want that happening here. So there's other ways to do to get what you want. And zoning's part of it, but you know, I don't want blight. I don't want my neighbor saying, hey, Sip's got a dump truck parked there. He's been working on it for five years. I won't let you have my property. I'll buy it right now. So that's why I'm against it. I seen with Doug and I seen with Doug's the budgets with the town.
I don't know where this is from, I guess.
When you issue a blight to someone, right? Do you make an order? I did. They don't do nothing. Like you said, they ain't going to do nothing. You send them a letter, blah, blah, blah. The only recourse you have, even with a blight, is to go to court. So when you go to court, it goes to the housing prosecutor. The housing prosecutor is one of the knowledge, is one of London. And then it goes before a judge. I've seen it where the judge said, hey, the guy's got no money. They don't order him to do nothing. But in the meantime, you're going to pay sixty, seventy grand, fifty grand for some blight guy that you don't need. For a town that's twenty-two hundred people, it's mostly rural and it's mostly state property everywhere. And everybody has a couple of cars in the, I don't know all your zone regs, but you're allowed two unregistered motor vehicles. That's kind of the state regs in Connecticut. So I am totally against this blight because I am totally not going to pay for a blight guy to make fifty, sixty grand a year because that's what you're going to pay. Plus all the bennies. And then all the costs for you.
Plus all the court fees and what's going on.
The city, the town attorney fees are going to go skyrocketing. The people start writing orders. It's going to go to the court. So I'm against it. I'm sorry, I know what you want, but there's other ways to do what you want to do. And I'd be more than willing to sit on the board to help you do that. But I don't want no blight program. This is not a city, town. And there's a lot of farms here too. Like me, mine only has forestry. You come to my property and tell me I can't have a tractor? I'm going to tell you to hit the road. So all I'm saying is there's other ways to get to what we want. I'm not for people's housing over here. This house is better farmed out. I understand that. There's ways to do it without a blight program. We don't need another guy.
Thanks, Jack. Anyone else have anything to say? Ron?
Back when I started as a selectman around two thousand, the board of selectmen tried to, they looked into how many people were interested in having a blight ordinance. And there was no backing for it. The cost for officials is expensive. And then if you've got to go to court, like Jack says, it's going to cost an arm and a leg. And most of the time you get judges that are just going to throw it out because you're wasting their time.
Thank you.
Now you wasted money.
Yeah, well, we wasted more than our money. The high man to, to do that job, that could be a miserable job for anyone.
Yeah.
And it's going to be an expensive job too. Farmers did not like it at all.
Yeah, we didn't do it the wrong.
There's a carve out in the proposition.
Well, for certain, if the way it's written is for.
Listen folks, no.
Well, who's to say, you know, what's not, what, what's not, what you can't happen in your yard? We've got projects here. I've got nineteen fifty-six Chevy that's been sitting out there for nine years, but I haven't been able to do it for some damn time doing it. Who's to say, you know, I've got a trailer over there. I keep it stuffed in a car. I got piles of logs or I got brush. I could see if it's a safety issue, but that's totally different ballgame. Like he said, there's, there's ordinance to act me. You get the, you know, the town guy to come in here, the building inspector and put something down on the house. So you really think.
Building inspector is limited.
I have a, I have a comment. I have a comment from someone that was, a resident that wasn't able to make it tonight, but sent an email statement, so I'm going to read it. It's Charles G. Boss. I understand the places that are being targeted by this ordinance, but I worry that the way it's written may be too broad and able to be applied in a harassing manner. Nosy neighbors and the like whose property values aren't being affected by derelict buildings that are hidden away from view on another person's land would still apply from this blight ordinance. This problem could be perhaps resolved by saying it needs to be easily visible from the street. It could also be applied to some of the lovely agricultural ruins that are scattered around, derelict barns that have reached the stage of art rather than blight. I'd hate to lose those ruins because someone decides to report it to the town. Thanks, Charles.
I straddled two towns, all the time, you know, and also one house, and shoots us forty thousand houses in it. So at any one time, we have this problem, as you can imagine, twenty times this time. Periodically when you drive around, you'll see a house for the next guy, you know, the property, right? They fall under the building. I love to do that because everything that's been brought up here has been a contention in town. For instance, my neighbor is a great guy. He had horses on three acres. Well, he doesn't own a farm, so everybody reported for his horse trailer and stuff near the road. He's got a boat. He's a great guy. And he's like, look, it's here before then. And then, then it's like, what's agriculture, what's a farm, what's not? And then he finds, and he's like, oh, because that's. There's been a couple of other cases too. You left your stuff in the front yard, you felt too long, you know, all, all that kind of stuff. Along with what Charles was saying, that you've got a really narrow end. What are you going to do when the fine? And it gets very complicated, like any law, this, well, not this, well, that, well, this case, and around it, you know? So it does get expensive and my town relies on it. You know, the building's not. They do well. They would, they would even come in before we had city water, city sewer and even say, your assumption is they all come, you know, and then they force them to do something.
Let, let me just say, as far as the building official goes, he's very limited. If it's a single family home, he has no right to order anything on like a blight thing. But if you have a home in this town that's rundown, I mean, really rundown. And there's people in there that could die, okay? That's a health issue, right? I did this in London for twenty years. I just called the health department because I had no right to go in there. Was an old lady. She was ninety-three years old, had two hippies living there. We'll call them hippies. And they trashed the place so bad. I just looked in the window. I knocked on the door because I have no right to go in. I called the health department. The health department came, met me. He went there. He has a right to go in. He has a right to go in. It's a health issue. He went in, then he invited me in, ordered me in. And I went in. We ended up condemning the house. And the woman got relocated. It was cleaned up with an attorney involved. All, all I'm trying to say to you guys. You open up the can of worms with this blight in a town like this, you're looking in trouble. I'll tell you right now, you're going to have neighbors fighting with each other, maybe complaining each other. It's no good. This town doesn't warrant a blight program. You don't even have hardly any two families in this town. There's a few. But it's mostly single family home. So it's a joke. I know you, I, I got a feeling you're dead set on doing it and so is the need. We don't want it.
Understood. And the reason why I'll build off of what Jim said is if you drive around this town, there's somewhere between ten and fifteen buildings, single family homes that are completely abandoned.
Okay.
Some of them are completely grown in. You can't even see them from the road.
You don't need a blight program to attack that.
So when, Tracy, I'm going to ask for your help on this. When we reached out to the lawyer with what we could do with current town resources, we were told that there's basically nothing we can do about those properties. Yes. And that's what took us down, exploring.
So there's a fire in that building. There's a fire in that building. What do you do then? Say this is someone, kid likes a fire, the building burned down. It's half up, half down, burnt. What do you do? I know what you do. What, what, what do you think you could do? As a building official, he can.
So now we're into a safety standpoint.
That's right. A building official can order a demo and the town can pay and lien the property.
They can do that anyway, which is what.
Yeah, what you do anyway. All I'm saying, guys. I just don't want blight in this town because I know what it does.
Understood. And that's why we have public hearings.
Other ways to do what you want to accomplish. You could still send a letter to the property owners that are abandoned. Somebody owns it. And if they're dead, well, pardon my French, but there's other ways to do it. The town can retake it. I'm sure if it's abandoned, they're not paying taxes.
Oh, no, they aren't paying taxes. They are all these properties.
Yes, so who is, who is it bothering because of the house there? But the guy's paying the taxes. He's paying the town. What's the issue? More kids going to school and he's still paying taxes on it. What's the issue? When, when, because it's an eyesore driving by, what?
No, it's not just eyesores. They, these are properties that are bringing down property values for the neighboring houses.
I'm also worried about squatters moving into some of its properties.
Squatters and.
So maybe they got to be bored enough.
Light's not going to throw squatters out, number one. They can't even throw a squatter out if he breaks in your house tonight. Say cops come in and say, hey, you lose it.
Tracy, look, what, what is it where?
I, well, I voted against this. I'm there in the ones that I've got.
Of a limited amount of people in the town to a decision. What, what has to be done?
Well, if the board, if the board decides to move this forward, it'll be at the town meeting and we will either we have a, we have, we're still waiting to find out because the tabulators are changing for the election. So we don't know how many questions we can have on our referendum ballot. So depending on how many questions we can have on the ballot, this will either be voted at, at the town meeting or on the referendum. So.
Any, any time you're here, let me see, certain times, yeah.
For the voting?
Yeah. When, when can you propose this?
This will be as the, this is the, everything we're talking about today is for the town meeting, which is on May twentieth.
And then, and then it would
It'll either.
Down through the year until we finally get to the point where.
No, it'll be voted on either at the town meeting on May twentieth by. That's a, that's a legal voter. That's May twentieth. So it'll either be voted on then or it'll be voted on at a referendum in here. It depends on, it depends on the tabulators if we can have.
Town should put a big eye on the status so everybody knows.
We will know if the board decides to move forward with this ordinance. That it'll be, that how it'll be here.
It's not up to this.
We know that. I mean, we want the town to make a decision.
Long as they have a right to see it.
And the town overwhelmingly know we, we can hear that loud and clear. It's, we, Jim and I just both felt the need that we have to do something because our options were limited on what we could do for the blighted properties that are around town. So we're trying to come up with something that we can do. And I hear now, I hear now.
Fifteen properties or however many you said there were, how many of those fifteen property owners have been sent letters?
Right now, one. Because we can only hand, like as far.
I mean, just send a letter or have a conversation or stop lying and say, hey, bud, or hey, whoever or say.
The town has to pay. It's too much to go after all of them at one.
I didn't say go after, just a courtesy letter saying, hey, guys, can somebody do, or what's going on? Does somebody need help? Maybe it's an elder person that can't take care of it themselves. Maybe there's some other circumstances. I mean, these conversations aren't had.
The, the overwhelming majority of the properties, again, ten to fifteen or so, are, they are, no one is living in them. The owners do not live in town. They don't even live in Connecticut.
But they're paying taxes.
They're paying taxes.
When you say, when you say paying taxes, you own residential property, right? Probably like, a lot like Mike. You're paying forty-four hundred dollars a year in property tax. Have, if you're not a shack. And it's raised at next to nothing. You're paying property taxes too, but you're not paying forty-four hundred. Maybe you're just paying something a fraction of that, a couple hundred bucks. And you leave this blighted structure there that maybe, maybe bring kids in or might cause problems, start a fire, do drugs, whatever, maybe attractive enough so that squatters move in. Yeah, they're paying taxes, but they're not carrying the burden that you're carrying.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not your guys' business. That's that homeowner's business.
Actually, this is our business. We're the governing board of the town. We're, we're not telling you what we're going to do. We're suggesting to the town, the town gets the vote on this. And if the town turns it down, fine. Enjoy looking at.
So are the, are the neighbors complaining about these houses? The ten to fifteen, they're, they're complaining. Have they gone over there? They can't say anything or talk to them or. There's no one there. There's no one living in these houses.
Is it, are there safety issues? I mean.
On some of these houses, there are more likely than not, there are safety issues.
The party department will not allow their men to go inside the.
I'm very interested in the house on forty-nine.
Right. No, they do not.
Unless you exhaust. People, I know those people live in Rhode Island that owns the house on forty-nine. On the same side that Dennis lives on, you're spending a lot of time through. The house, you got Dennis's house, you got the driveway, then you got that house. Nice house right there with the. You see the Spalding's house, the people that own it who live in Rhode Island? I mean, have you sent them a certified letter asking them if they could sell their property or do something with it?
I don't know. I know it is.
Even a share. I wouldn't mind trying to buy that property.
So. And since that point, since that point. Just again, to your point, it's my point. I see this more than anything as simply being a lever to get somebody off their duck, either remediate the problem, right? Correct it, fix it or tear it down. And if you don't, there's a financial penalty to encourage you to decide, okay, I don't want to deal with this problem. I'm going to solve it for you. And you can deal with it.
Look, there's ways to do it without a blight. That's what I'm saying. You've got it in your head, you're dead set wanting this to pass. Yes, you're going to put it out to the public, honey, god. That's what I was.
Without the penalty phase, how do we inform them?
But you don't get the penalty. You don't get the penalty. So I have a piece of property, say, I live in Florida. I have a piece of property here. You guys are putting the blight ordinance on it or whatever. And I'm like, I don't care. I whatever. We're going to go to court. It's going to cost the town a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get rid of my house now because it's got asbestos and lead and all of that stuff and getting rid of demo at that price. It's ridiculous. I don't know if you guys know how much it is, but it is ridiculous. I'm going to get a piece of property now that's leveled. Great. Got foundation. I'm going to build now. You just made my profit and I'm not going to sell it. I'm going to keep the house. You guys just made my property nice and clean for me to keep it there for another thirty, forty, fifty years. And put a nice house on it. Granted, it's going to get a nice house on it, but you guys paid to do it or we all paid to do it. Do you know what I'm saying? What if it was the town a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to clear, to demo somebody's house?
Put a lien on it and the town will get the property.
You won't get the property until I sell it. You won't get the money back.
Yeah, if they did anything as an act of the town, they would be a lien.
Yeah, but you won't, the town won't get the money.
But we won't see a down with that until it's sold in twenty, thirty, forty years.
Yeah.
Meanwhile, while the interest collects it, twenty-eight percent or whatever the town's getting, percent and a half a month, whatever they're owing.
I know, but it costs us now for future dollars that who knows when we would ever see it.
Who know? Who wants to spend this money? Does anybody want to spend this money for this?
How much did it cost you to send the letter to all these property users? She said you only sent one. What about the other fourteen?
And you know what? Before we go any further, maybe Tracy, you can take a minute to explain the steps that we've taken with that particular property owner.
That's one particular property you had a problem with. I understand that.
This is representative of everybody saying, you can do this.
One is not representative of the fifteen you're talking about.
No, you didn't.
There's always a bad seat.
I'm saying that it's representative of what we expect or what I would expect of that. So what do we do? We send letters.
Yeah, tax letters went out to everybody with incorrect numbers as well.
But like I said, what's the issue? Just because the house looks ugly and it's gone down? Or is there a safety issue? I mean, what, what's the issue? But like I said, what's the issue? Just because the house looks ugly and it's gone down? Or is there a safety issue? I mean, what, what's the issue? Who was to say what the issue is? Because I don't like looking at it. And in my neighbor's house, I don't like looking at it. So I'm gonna get. Have the light enforcement go over there and find the guy.
You know, we, we also had a concern that people are using to harass other people. My suggestion is simply done fine. We have a filing fee. If you wanna make a complaint against your neighbors that were on, and when you decided we couldn't do that. But I thought that, you know, having a filing fee to make a complaint would keep somebody who's a bad.
Why the town didn't get enough when they tripled permitting fees?
Say, because we can completely talk about this all night, but we still have a lot of stuff to talk about. Um, the, the town meeting, um, it'll be, there'll be two votes about this at the town meeting. There'll be one due to the, um, light ordinance, um, yes or no for light ordinance. And then yes or no for an additional, um, three hundred thousand dollars added on to the, um, proposed budget.
May twentieth?
With like three hundred and thirty-three thousand in the proposed budget. More people voted down.
Yes, that's, that's the way the town meeting works, so. And sometimes in town meetings, we have as low as twenty people show up. Sometimes we've got a hundred plus. Depends on the issues that are being discussed. I'm gonna predict that you gotta be a hundred plus. I, I hear you.
A couple of years ago for, um.
Was it changing the, uh, the alcohol?
Heat control or something on Chalkan, and we got a lot of people. Vote or vote because they were like, yeah, too many people don't like this. We're just not gonna move it forward.
So, thank you all very much for showing up. I mean, there's still more to the meeting if you wanna stay, but thanks for showing up and making yourself here loud and clear.
So we'll move on to the parking ordinance, the parking.
I'll vote against it. I'll buy your beer, right?
I'll see you then. And I will gladly have a beer with you.
Now, the parking, um, the parking regulations are, um, put in place for safety, for safety reasons. Um, these are so that we can, um, set, send citations to people. Now, these are when they're, um, when they're, when they're, because in here it talks about, um. Tickets coming from the Board of Selectmen. That makes them citations, not motor vehicle tickets. So they're not, they're not tickets that show up on motor vehicle records if they're, if we're giving them. If the police are called and the police give them and they are in motor, motor vehicle. Yeah, we're on parking. We're on parking. So, um, these are for the, um, for the parking regulations that are violated. And they're, and they're fined by the Board of Selectmen. Like I just said, they're citations. Um, these are for, um, even having issues, um, for snow. Um, it's a safety issue when the cloud can't get through and has to go around. Um, so it'll. Be done then. Uh, for winter parking, this is just so that like when we have, when the cloud crews have to go out. When the cloud crews have to go out for a storm, um, in the morning or late at night. It's just so when we have, um, a snow, a snow parking van that people aren't parking overnight. Um, and even just from November first to April thirtieth, they just know not to park in case it snows or gets icy or for whatever reason. And, um, it's just also because our town roads are, are really narrow roads. And if people are parking, if people are parking and there are vehicles in the roads, then, um, it's hard for emergency vehicles to get through. So that's the purpose of this ordinance. It's just to, uh, be safe. And it would only, um, really be enforced if there's.
Make sure ambulance can get to every door.
Could be cleared so the ambulance.
Unbent a circle. It's a really.
I have a hard time getting in my, in my parents driveway a lot of times, so I understand that.
Primarily when, when you're talking about winter snow removal or is this?
These parking, these parking regulations will be in place all year. Um, but. Right, the biggest problem we have right now is just for, is winter and snow.
Just, just question. In a situation where like, say, you've got a home where there's a big party going on, you've got a lot of people, but you don't have enough space to park them in your.
As long as they're me, as long as they're not blocking the road, so that, uh, what, uh, the picture of a fire truck. If a fire truck can get through, then yours should be good. But also it could be a problem too if, um. It's depending on the, the sightlines of where the party is. I've, I've actually had to have people move before because if they're having a party at their house and their houses look like in between the corners. And cars are in the way so that if, uh, you just have to think, safety wise. If they're gonna cause a car accident because someone's trying to go around and there's oncoming traffic. Um, that's, it's only gonna be enforced if those issues aren't placed. Well, it's, and if there's complaints on them. This just gives us, us, um, enforcement because we don't really, besides calling the state police and having them come. It, it's really hard to get them to come and enforce anything on the town roads, um, because we don't have a resident trooper. Um, if we had a resident trooper, then we probably wouldn't have the, have a parking regulation.
So who actually in the town?
This would be complaints to the Board of Selectmen. So it would be, um. Usually what happens, especially with the snow, with the snow at night, public works will take a picture of the plate of the car. And they'll be like, this car is in the way. Can you contact the property owner? So that's how it would be. There would be pictures of license plates or pictures of cars in front of properties and that's how it would be enforced. I'm not gonna show that people's houses.
We're not hiring anyone to drive around town as the parking enforcement official. Yeah.
Uh, so that's the, um, parking regulations. Does anyone have any questions on that? Any other questions? So now we're on to the. Budget. So. This year we, um, had a couple of interesting things with our budget. I mean, it was a rebalance year. On the back you can see the numbers. It's, they're kind of small. But, um, so the total real estate, um, values for, for, um, last year's grand list. GL grand list, that's the way that we figure out the budget is the grand list is the total value of everyone's properties in town. Uh, and land. And, uh, so we assess our taxes off of the grand list. And we, and our budget, um, the taxes are what pays for what's in our budget. Uh, so you can see the difference from, since we had the rebalance, the property difference went up on the grand list. Um, housing values would increase a lot. As you all noticed with your assessments, I noticed it with mine as well. Um, and so that's what happened with the rebound. But we're also facing another challenge in motor vehicles. Um, most people will notice, um, the state is assessing motor vehicles differently this year. Um, instead of going by the blue book value, which was a lot of times crazy, um, it's. If anyone that had trucks has noticed in the past couple of years, it doesn't matter how old or what your truck looked like, um, the tax did probably went up on it. Um, because it was assessed by the Kelly, um, blue book value and now they are moving to.
MSRP.
Yeah, so.
So sticker price. That nobody ever paid in the first place, except for twenty twenty. But, but it's a data point that they can stick to. That will reverse the trend of taxes going up on older vehicles.
And then they depreciate it.
Exactly, and then there's an appreciation schedule based off of the MSRP.
So we are gonna be losing revenue of, is it over five million dollars? Based on the, the, um, lower value of the vehicle. So, um, that is the state's idea to do that without giving the town. And they, they know full well that the towns get all of their money towards their budgets, pretty much all of it. We do get some revenue from the state, but everyone knows that's not much either. Um, from property tax. And the governor is constantly saying that he's gonna lower taxes this, lower taxes that, but they, then they pass things without compensating the towns. For loss of what they're passing. So the five million dollars we're losing, which is good because everyone's taxes are going down. But also we're losing the revenue. But we're, but we are making up some of that revenue. Well, pretty much all of that revenue we're making up because everyone's property went up, so. But those were some of the things we had. Other towns that did not have, um, rebalts are just taking hits on. So, um, the rebound sucks, but in other ways, they, they helped us with our taxes and that was good, so. Um, so that's one of the changes with the rebound and the car taxes. Um, so as far as our budget goes, we did have some increases this year. Um, and the biggest areas are in public safety and in our elderly services. Um, so public safety. Uh, so for public safety, one of the biggest places that we're looking at, um, is in. Emergency responders. We currently have, um, two. Excuse me, page staff for their town, town page staff for DMTE and fire. We have two page staff on five days a week. Um, we have been requested by the fire department to go to seven days a week. Um, it's getting harder, um, to find volunteers to respond to calls. And, um, the, the volunteers we do have are, um, aging out. And it's getting harder for them to, um, to do what they should be doing for, and most do this twenty to twenty-five, thirty years. Um, and we're not getting a volunteer.
The average age of our fire department is pushing fifty.
No, no.
Was it fifty-seven? Fifty-seven. So that's who it. They're doing a great job, but how much longer can average age fifty-seven year olds be charging into a burning home to try and save?
So they're just not getting young kids, you know, out of high school. Kids just aren't interested.
So this, in this budget, we are, um, proposing to add the, um, the, the two people for Saturday and Sunday. So during the day, which will help a lot. Yep. And, um. So that was the public safety. And then for the elderly services. We have an increase. We have a huge need for elderly transportation. Um, we currently have, we have a program currently, um, we received our, um, senior van. Um, that we got for free from grants. And, um, we have people calling and waiting. We got this van going and we get a twenty-one thousand dollar grant from the state to run it. And it's a matching grant, so we need another twenty thousand, um, to match it, which gives us, um, almost. Pretty much all the money that we need to get something going. So it's a huge need. Our, our population in town is, um, is. The highest popul, yeah, the highest population is the senior population and the senior population is living lo, living longer. And this, um, transportation is very, very beneficial for people of aging at home. So we have a lot.
Do we have somebody that drive, will drive the van?
We haven't, we, we haven't, um, hired anyone yet and we're, we're in the process right now of hiring. Um, an agent for the elderly who is gonna be a part-time position and they're gonna be in charge of the scheduling. And, um, hopefully when we get them hired, they'll help us hire and train and, and make the class the drivers, yeah.
Can one of like, can a bus, one of the bus drivers drive that one?
Yeah, we actually have a list of retired and, um, bus drivers who are ready to go, so.
They need to have CDL, right?
Uh, not for that, they don't. But they, it's a, a smaller bus.
So it's, it's not much bigger than the one that the wheelchair van that the school uses. And I know from talking to the bus drivers that they do not need a CDL for the driver of the wheelchair van, so.
So does anyone have any specific questions about the budget? If you didn't have a copy and they're on the table anywhere.
What is the total revenue that this town takes in?
Um, yeah, that we, we, we don't know a hundred percent what that actual amount's gonna be yet. Until the state passes their budget, but Julie, with our finance director, and she's gonna explain that to.
I mean, we saw this budget, we're falling within, but we're taking in, we're not like.
Will it go up?
Yeah, the, the schools, um, we don't have the school's budget yet. They're expected to go up about a hundred and fifty grand right now, which is gonna march. So it'll be close to a mill, but it will, it. In a perfect year without a rebound, it would have gone up a lot. But with the rebound, it's actually gonna go down seven.
So it's actually going up technically three mils.
If there was no rebound, it'd be going up a mill this year. But with the rebound, the mill rate's actually going down seventy.
Because a mill is now a higher, higher number.
Call whatever, do whatever math we want. It's still a rate of check for more.
It'll be, it'll be, it'll be a little more for, for.
We don't, we can't, we can't figure out the exact, we can give you, uh. Last year, the mill rate was, um, twenty-nine point three three. If the school and the budget stays the same, the mill rate will be twenty-one point seven five. So if you have that chart with the mill rate on it. So there's a chart in the back with the mill rates on it. It shows what the mill rates were from twenty seventeen till the proposed one.
Julie, could you just read those out in your mind here?
We thought we'd see we're twenty-nine, forty-five, and we went to twenty-eight, ninety-two, twenty-nine, twenty-one, twenty-nine, twenty-one. Twenty-eight, oh, seven, then we down, and down to twenty-seven, seventy-seven, stayed the same for the next year. Last year was twenty-nine, twenty-four, and now we'll be down to twenty-one, seventy-two.
So when was the last rebalance year? Was it the light blue one?
Twenty-one, twenty-two is the last rebalance year. Yeah, we're still waiting on the school budget and we're still waiting for the revenue. The anticipated.
So we don't, so we don't know if this proposed budget is gonna fall. Yeah, so we don't, so we don't know if this proposed budget is gonna fall under what you per, you expect to take in.
Um, the, the budget that we're talking about right now is, we're, we're talking about the spending part of it. Um, for the revenue, what we're looking at from the state right now, they haven't actually passed anything yet. So we don't know if it's a hundred percent what's gonna happen, but right now we're looking that they're holding us harmless for the, we're, for the EPS funds that they were gonna cut. Um, they're, they're anticipated to be cut a hundred, about a hundred and seventeen thousand, I think. And this year and also next year in EPS funds, which together they're almost a mill rate. But, um, last I heard, they were, we were gonna be held harmless again. So for the next two years, we wouldn't, that wouldn't be a cut, so we'd be fine there. Um, we, they, from the other estimates I've seen, these are all things that have passed appropriations, but they haven't voted on them in the House or the Senate yet. So, and the governor hasn't done anything, so we don't know. Um, the pilot funding is the same. Um, and I think we actually had an increase in, um, county roads by over fifty grand. So the, the revenue that we're looking at from the state has a, is up from last year. So we're not anticipating any cuts of her, that.
Do you know if they'll make decisions before we vote on our budget?
Um, they should, so it was a state we've.
I know.
Don't hold your breath.
I know, trust me.
We're not, we're not anticipating a loss in revenue from the state. Um, if there, if there is anything, um, we're hoping to hear from it before we vote, but we can always do, um, supplemental if anything happens. But we're not, we're not anticipating. The town budget and the school budget is voted for separately at the meeting and we are moving, we are for sure moving the budget parts to referendum. So those will be loaded on referendum here. There is, um, the school budget, the town budget and the capital project budget, which if no one has any other questions about this budget, we can.
And when the vote comes for all this, when we can vote on everything? And the whole bond town residents get the vote. Now, what about property owners that live out of town, they can vote on these matters as well?
They can if they.
They have to have a certain amount in taxes they pay.
What's the number on that?
I think it's a thousand.
I think it's a thousand.
Over a thousand dollars you can vote.
Yeah, if you're a property owner. And they just come in, if it's a referendum, so they just come, they'll be on a list, they just come in with their ID like they just vote.
But like I said, last year only a hundred and twenty-five of them total came in, both all day. I hope not, it's boring. We stay here all day, so please come visit us.
And, uh, so the capital improvement plan, um, the money for the capital improvement plan is money that we already have. So it's not, it doesn't come from taxes, it's money that we have in our, um, general fund and we're just defining it projects. Um, so what we're, um, recommending is a total of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and it would be, uh, two hundred thousand dollars for public work, which is our match for a steep grant that we applied for. Uh, we, we were supposed to find out today if we got that grant or not, and we did not, so.
Did you find out or you didn't get it?
You didn't find out.
It's everything again. Oh, did I?
Well, no.
You didn't get an answer.
You didn't get it, but.
To be clear, we didn't get an answer. We don't know yet. You're, you did.
On what I printed out, that was on the town's website the other day, it was in the town hall, there was dog fund and IT computers upgrades, leave that all out, the dog fund, it's not there now.
We spent it at the last meeting, so I don't know. Well, the computers we need are, um, are firewall and at the end of life that.
I see that, but the, uh, the dog fund with.
The dog fund, we have ECOG, it's fired to take care of our services and we have to pay them, um, certain amounts, here's we have to fund that. Yeah, we changed them.
Yes, it's, yeah.
It's in the register.
Yeah.
The dog fund, we already got moved from here to the register.
Yeah, five grand.
And, and I'm just curious, the public works portion, what is that for?
Uh, the two hundred thousand is a speed grant, we applied for a speed grant, a million dollar grant, um, to do, um, drainage, uh, culverts and roadwork on Congdon Road. Um, it's a, for, it's a million dollar grant and the town has to put two thousand dollars towards it, which is one of the two hundred thousand.
Yeah, I looked on the.
You actually get a million dollars.
Well, you get a million dollars, but we have to put two hundred thousand.
Well, we get eight hundred thousand is pretty much.
No, we got.
No, we get one point two.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, one point two, but we put in two. We put in two hundred to get that million dollar grant on the.
So the budget's one point two. The policy management, the paperwork from there says it's recommended, but it's not required or preferred, but not required to put in twenty percent.
We, in the application, we said we'd put in two hundred thousand. We won't get the grant if you go for the back.
Did anybody take a shot and try it?
And I mean, the roads are already screwed up. If, and we do that, then we miss the entire cycle. It's not like we can amend it, it would be, we don't get that million dollars and we have to wait another year.
This is our best shot to get it.
Five hundred thousand, we've never had a speed grant at a million dollars. This is our best shot to get one of the roads down that we don't, we don't, we don't wanna put a million dollars in, um, the budget for everybody to pay for to do a road. Our roads are second-hand, they can't plan their project. It's our first shot of getting a road down that we did not pay.
And this is for one road?
Yeah, yeah.
Roads aren't cheap.
What's the one down the road?
Three mils.
Three million for that culvert down the road.
Thirty-eight.
Over three million.
And there's what, thirty, thirty-seven miles of town road?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, so there's twenty-nine miles of town road. So if it's a million dollars just for Congdon Road, which is what?
One point two.
Hi, so that makes, hi, there's, so the, the drain is in Ringlesburg, I don't know, because they didn't really even have data. It's still a lot of roads to it with the amount of rain that we've been getting and, uh. So these are the capital projects, but the two hundred thousand for the speed grant, um, forty thousand for the fire alarm at the school. And it needs to be completely re-done over there. Um, forty thousand for the ambulance, we've been putting money towards it, um, every year. Uh, we're gonna get a new ambulance within probably a couple of years. And.
And the price of the ambulance was what, four hundred K?
Yeah.
It was.
In a couple of years, it's gonna be eight hundred.
Yeah, so, so we do things like that, it's like forty K per year away for it.
And Julie said it takes like three years to order one, uh, yeah. Um, and the computer upgrades, um, the computers are just set there under life and need to be repaired. That's where we are voting for. And I guess all, if anyone has any other questions about anything.
So the twentieth at the school.
Yeah, twenty, oh, these are grants that we, that we have gotten. Uh, we have the twenty-one thousand, one sixty-five, that's the money I was talking about for a senior transportation.
As long as we put on.
Twenty-nine.
Then we did, there's no free money.
Yeah. And, uh, the Fort Hill Bridge project that we're working on with the DOT, that's five point five million.
At present.
Um, the Congdon Road, million dollars that we're still waiting to hear about. Um, the community connectivity grant, um, that's what we're working on for sidewalks. And the Connecticut Transportation of Rural Improvement Program, that sidewalks too. The community connectivity is the, the walking track and sidewalks around, making this area around Gate Street and, um.
Oh, that's a good side, honey.
Put sidewalks on so that people can walk from like the park to the brewery, the town. So like we're trying to make it safe for people to get around town. And, um, the community investment, find a water study and we're currently studying to see if it's feasible to, uh, put in community wells. Uh, one, um, in the downtown area here and one, um, down in the Bennett Circle area. So that, um, although the properties are small and cold areas, so that people can, um, take the well off their property and have more room to improve their, um, sewer and, and, uh. That's what the project is, we're still waiting to see if that's even possible, because we're trying to find.
Now, if there is a community water anyplace, is that something that was in town owned?
Or a, no, 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 there aren't. There's already one community well in town on, um.
Valley Drive.
No, yeah, thank you, thank you, I mean, everybody. Connecticut Water owns some of it.
Owns the rights to have.
So that two P has to study to see if it's possible.
Yeah, we're just seeing if it's possible.
When is this construction going to start on Fort Hill Road?
Um, that is looking to start in April of twenty twenty-six, I think is when we actually start doing stuff, there's still.
One question on the world, we, were they, where do you wanna put them?
We're still trying to figure out where to put them, because, uh.
Looking for two hundred fifty dollars to figure it out.
Yeah.
Choice of stuff. Well, uh, let me ask you this question.
Or that we're gonna, we have to do that well to see if the area that we're looking at can even get the, like, any of the water pressure and like all this scientific.
Let me ask one question.
Yeah.
Does, uh, Bronson Stump have a liner on it?
Oh, I don't know.
No.
But that's not where we're looking, we're looking, we're looking behind the school.
But, um, how do they say, stuff closed downhill?
What?
I can prove it's very. Different.
Yeah.
Just saying, be very precise and we have to be a lot of different studies done because you have a super fund right in your backyard.
Yeah.
Well, remember, stuff with dumping air, more toxics than you could think of back in the fifties and sixties and seventies. That's one thing to just keep in mind, but with that dump, it's where you put them well to.
Yeah, so the spot we're looking at, where the, um, one up here is behind, probably like more behind the housing authority, there's town property back there. So that's where we're looking to.
Probably the Bennett Circle.
Yeah, and in Bennett Circle.
Bennett Circle, half their own. Hey, we're talking about two.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I was confused.
Yeah, that was possible.
Yeah.
So we're just in the study phase of that and that would be if they, if it ends up feasible for either of them, it would be grant funded because there's no way, these are. We never know that it paid for, so.
So these are all grants that we've applied for and gotten, except for the million.
The speed grant we haven't heard yet, we were, we were really supposed to have known by today, that's why we had it up there. Um, hopefully we'll find out.
Thank you.
And if not, then we can, uh, take it out. Or you support. We have other rules, anything? Any other questions? Thank you, everyone.
So, if this budget doesn't pass, there is the idea of the cuts for the.
Um, if it doesn't pass, then we would have to get together and decide what to cut out. Um, I don't know what that would be, you, you don't wanna cut public services. So the, what, we don't know if we would start with what's proposed and take it out, which would be the fire department staff or.
School system.
The senior services, that's a different budget.
That's a different project.
I realize that, that is a great point.
But if this budget doesn't pass, we can't cut the school budget for, we gotta pass.
They both have the, they're two separate ones.
Yeah.
Sure.
One to pass and one to fail.
Yeah. This is a percentage increase in this budget instead of the policy. So that's what we have to consider. Yeah.
And the vote on May twentieth, that's all, you're open all day or there's certain.
May twentieth, is that town, that's a school, that's, that's a, tell me.
Seventy, yeah, six P M.
Oh, all right.
The town meeting at seven, and the, and the vote is from the well to the.
Well, the eight is the referendum.
June thirtieth.
June third.
The meetings, May twentieth, vote in thirty.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is there a possibility?
And depending on whether or not.
On May twentieth.
The new voting machines can handle more than a certain number of items.
That how many questions we can have on the ballot.
So we may be voting on the, um, the ordinances at the town meeting rather than that referendum. So just make sure everyone's fully aware.
Yes, we have all the town meetings.
Yes.
The budgets definitely will be at referendum. So I think it's easier for everyone to vote that one.
Most preferences need to have everything in a referendum.
It would be, but if we can't do it on a, if we can't do it on the machine, then we can.
And last.
Waiting to hear back from the tabulator company, to the new company.
Yeah.
So if this was an election year, we would all be able to.
No, so with the.
I could ask now, I'm saying.
It's a different ballot, it's a yes and no ballot, which we have, state of Connecticut got new tabulators this year, we haven't even used them yet. Um, God help us. So we're not sure because it's a totally different system than what we used to have. When we asked them about putting yes and no questions on it, they were kind of like, uh, what do you mean, what's, because they didn't know what a referendum was. Because a lot of states don't have them, a lot of towns don't have referendums, they don't, but a lot of towns, we don't vote on your budget. The board or whatever finances it, and you just go with whatever they say, so. They were waiting to hear back on whether or not we can do yes and no questions and how many we can put on there. Yeah, they'll be like, well, the ballots are set up differently, it's just, we don't know if they'll, they can set up.
Yeah, because when you vote for, for offices, there's like, you check, you just check bubbles, you're not doing yes or no, so.
Yeah.
Ruin that in the wheel.
So when you do go to vote, take the two seconds to read the machine, because it's all new machine, or you have to literally look at the machine and watch what it says. Because it will say to you, your ballot is casted, or you overvoted, or you undervoted, do you still wanna cast it? You have to say yes or no. You can't just put it in the machine and walk away. So, kind of puts it on you guys instead of on us if the ballot is left there.
For anyone that doesn't know, Belinda's one of our registrars, so. She's been going through a lot of training about that. Yeah.
So, any other questions? You guys, we've got one more item that we wanna make sure we have.
Volunteers, maybe volunteers, so if anyone's looking for any way to get involved. Um, we have the farmers market and recreation events, um, boards and commissions, it's an election year. So if you're interested in anything, um, you can.
We, we have vacancies, you don't have to wait until November. If you can look at what vacancies are available, um, EDC has vacancies, whichever of the boards.
I don't know.
Planning and zoning.
I don't know, I haven't.
I don't think planning and zoning.
Plenty of opportunities, come on.
There's, there's at least four open positions right now on boards and commissions that we could just fill if someone wanted to volunteer for it. And then you could run in the election.
The historical, uh, and if you're interested in, and we're holding an office over the, for the election. Um, get in touch with, um, the Republican, if you're Republican or Democrat or unaffiliated, if you're Republican or Democrat. There is, uh, Republican town committees and Democratic town committees, they have meetings regularly, um, you can ask me or anyone when the next meeting is for anything and we'll let you know. Um, they usually, um, try to get them on the website or on the cap, they're on the calendar at least. Um, the Historical Society needs members, friends of the library, um, the fire department, as we mentioned before, and, um.
And any younger people, but we'll be clear.
And one more, Tracy, Memorial Day committee, we need help with the Memorial Day parade, so. And that's it, thank you, thank you everyone for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He did it over there. As high.